Good evening. This eighty-sixth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Our members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, will be the coronavirus, please note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, you may state your name and begin talking. The next invocation will be delivered by Robin Turner, new pastor of New Hope Baptist Church, which will be followed by a pledge of allegiance. Pastor Turner?
Thank you. Greetings to our sisters and our brothers. Let us pray. Most holy and gracious Father, we come now to you with humble and grateful hearts, realizing that we move, breathe, and have our being through you. But we thank you for our city council, our mayor, and all of our leaders in the city, God. We pray, God, that you will give them the wisdom and knowledge, God, to continue to guide us to brighter and better days. God, we pray for divine peace. We pray for divine progression. We pray for divine provision. And we pray for divine providence, God, that you would keep us safe, God, and that you would continue to bless Baltimore City. God, again, we say thank you. We pray for every neighborhood, every community, every community leader. We pray for every department and every department leader, God, that they will grasp hold of the wisdom and knowledge that they need to work together in unity. God, do the things that we ask in your precious and holy name, and we all say amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what is saying, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Sam McClellan of the LGBT Health Resource Center of Chase Brexton.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, good evening.
Excellent. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for inviting us to come and speak with you tonight. It's an honor and a privilege. I am the director of the LGBT Health Resource Center of Chase Brexton Healthcare. I want to share a little bit with you about our history and what we do in the organization, and then I would welcome an opportunity to answer any of your questions that may arise. I'm sure most of you are aware of Chase Brexton Healthcare's rather storied history. We were founded in nineteen seventy-eight by the gay community as a health center responding to a gay men's health crisis. This was actually just previous to the beginning of the AIDS pandemic, and as a result of that, Chase Brexton was right on the front line, ready to step in and take what would become a very large role responding to HIV and AIDS. If you fast forward forty-one years, Chase Brexton Healthcare is a very large federally qualified health center. We became FQHC in nineteen ninety-nine. The way I like to think about our history is that we were founded by what was then called the gay community, which would now be called the LGBTQ+ community. And then after a number of years of service, that community literally gave Chase Brexton to the larger city of Baltimore. And we served close to forty thousand patients in the state of Maryland. We have five locations, and we're very proud of the work we do. And I think, as all of you know, we treat all patients regardless of their ability to pay. We probably have one of the most diverse patient populations anywhere in the country, and we're very proud of that and enjoy stepping up to the challenges presented by our mission. Now, the Resource Center, which I run, is a division that oversees LGBT healthcare. In my unit, we have a behavioral health team. We have multiple support groups. We have both adult and pediatric gender care for transgender populations. We also have a program called Elder Pride, which is anchored in taking care of our LGBT elders. Now, at Chase Brexton, we actually define elder as anyone over fifty. So when I came to work at Chase Brexton, I was surprised to learn that I'm already an elder, but pleased at that. And we start at that age, which is different than many organizations would define a senior, because we know based on health disparities, LGBTQ people and people aging with HIV age differently, require different services at earlier ages. Within the Elder Pride program, we also have an event called National Honor Our LGBTQ Elders Day. It's actually a national day of commemoration. It was founded right here in Baltimore, right inside of the division that I now run. It's now celebrated all over the world, and we are just proud to continue to leave that tradition. We also have a training and education division in the Resource Center, and we have a health equity training team. And the purpose of that training team is to ensure that all healthcare providers have access to information on how to take care of LGBTQ+ patients. It might surprise you to know that very little, sometimes no information at all, is given during medical training about how to take care of this ever-growing patient population. So we do a lot of training in that area. I looked back at some data on how many people we trained in the last year, and it was a little over one thousand medical providers that we've trained, and we give them continuing education credits and detailed information, specifically on, I think, the most popular requests we get are to teach transgender healthcare and also to teach cultural competency for taking care of LGBTQ+ elders. We teach both medical providers and behavioral health providers as well. Occasionally, we'll get an invitation from a government agency or a social work agency, Health and Human Services types of organizations, and more and more, we get opportunities to speak inside of large employers who are looking to improve their cultural competency and principles and cultural behavior around inclusion, equity, and diversity. I think I'm just going to leave it at that and take questions if anyone has any.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for all your great work. Roll call. The clerk will now call the roll of the numbers.
President Scott. Councilman Cohen.
President.
Councilwoman McRae.
President.
Councilman Dorsey.
President.
We are. Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Schleifer.
President.
Vice President Middleton.
President.
Councilman Pinkett.
Present.
Councilman Burnett.
President.
Members, if you could please remember to mute yourselves when you ask questions. Councilman Reisinger.
Here.
Councilman Costello.
Present.
Councilman Stokes.
Present.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal. Without objection, the journal is adopted. The journal is adopted. Bills vetoed by the mayor can be found on page two. Last week, these vetoes were read into the record, and now we will take a vote and have the opportunity to override those vetoes. The clerk will read the bills into the record and take roll call vote.
Mr. President, very briefly, the journals that we just approved were for June fifteenth, twenty twenty, the five p.m. meeting, and the six thirty meeting, and they were sent to the members' desks. The bills which have been submitted back to the council, having been vetoed, are City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three eight zero Charter Amendment Vetoes. President Scott, Cohen, McRae, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock...
Mr. President, two things, Kaylin. First, one, you have to read the entire thing, and second, you have to take a vote with everyone.
Is the roll call vote, Mr. President?
Point of order, calling for roll call.
Yeah, it is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. First veto of the term, Mr. President. For the purpose of modifying the vote by which the council may override a mayoral veto, repealing the mayoral authority to veto items of appropriation and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McRae.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
No.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
No.
No.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Did you hear me?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. President, you have twelve affirmative and three negative.
All right. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four six seven Charter Amendment Vetoes. Timing of override. For the purpose of modifying and clarifying the time within which the council may consider to override a mayoral veto and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McRae.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
No.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
No.
Councilman Stokes.
No.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Did you hear me?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. President, you have twelve affirmative and three negative.
All right. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four six seven Charter Amendment Vetoes. Timing of override. For the purpose of modifying and clarifying the time within which the council may consider to override a mayoral veto and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. President Scott.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman. Listen.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may just speak to this for just one moment.
Go ahead, Council.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody of exactly what this bill does, that under the current charter, we have to wait a minimum of five days, but not more than twenty days, just in order for a member of the council to be able to make a motion to override a veto. And what this amendment would do is allow that if there is no city council meeting occurring within that timeframe, that at the next meeting after that timeframe, not at a later date, but only at the next meeting after that timeframe, then the city council may make that motion at that time. A member of the council may make that motion at that time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McRae.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Mr. President, thank you. The veto is written. Bill is approved. Bill to be introduced. City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four five Charter Amendment Term Limits. For the purpose of providing that a person who has served a certain number of terms as mayor, comptroller, president of the city council, or member of the city council is ineligible to again serve in that office during the immediately following term, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsors: Schleifer, Burnett.
Please add the council president as a co-sponsor, Councilman Henry, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Cohen as co-sponsors to the legislation. I feel like we've been here before in this term, but Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is to finish off the term the way we started. As you may recall, I introduced this bill in the beginning of this term at the first opportunity, and what this bill does is it's not a lifetime ban on how long you can serve. What it simply says is you can serve three consecutive terms as city council, the comptroller, council president, or the mayor. You could move up, or you could move out, and then you could always come back if you'd like to. And so, you know, this is a responsible thing to do for transparency and accountability. It's always good to have some degree of rotation going on. It's also important that as councilpeople, we understand that we're going to be constituents one day ourselves. And so, last time, this bill did not go the way I had hoped, and so I'm giving it another try and hoping that I can count on at least one additional colleague to support it over the last time, so we can get it passed. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four six Natural Resources Forest and Tree Conservation. For the purpose of amending the forest tree conservation provisions of Article seven of the Baltimore City Code to comply with new state requirements, to coordinate with other city environmental requirements, and to align the code with existing policy, correcting certain references, allowing mitigation to be provided through forest mitigation banks located within the city, updating the requirement for mitigation fee usage, aligning the allowed usage of forest conservation funds with the definitions allowed by the state, adding annual reporting and by any review requirements as required by the state, reducing the amount of required land that triggers a review to conform with the amount of required land for grading and building permits or building permits, requiring that a forest stand delineation by an element of other reviews, including site plan reviews, subdivision, grading, and erosion, and sediment control, requiring that all grading or building permits and sediment and erosion control, subdivision, or development plan approvals be conditioned on approval of and compliance with an approved forest conservation plan, modifying mitigation fees to conform with critical area and landscape manual mitigation fees, and modifying the amount of violation fees, fines, adding a definition for critical root zone to the code, and modifying the definition of specimen tree, allowing notifications to applicants to be sent by email, adding a specimen tree mitigation policy to the code, requiring that applicants notify adjacent property owners for significant impacts to on-site specimen trees, establishing a procedure with criteria and requirements for modifying existing forest conservation easements, clarifying that variances may be granted in advance of activity, requiring forest conservation approval, and that variances may not be granted after violation of the provisions of this code, and generally relating to forest and tree conservation and approving and adopting a new Baltimore City Forest Conservation Manual. Sponsors: President on behalf of the administration, Bullock, Dorsey.
Please add Councilman Clark, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Henry, Councilman Cohen as co-sponsors. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee, and without objection, we had a mistake. Without objection, we are going to assign Bill twenty dash zero five four five Charter Amendment Term Limits to the Equity and Structure Committee without objection. Thank you. This last bill has been assigned to the force bill has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four seven Amended Effective Dates for Water Accountability and Equity Act. For the purpose of modifying the effective date of ordinance twenty dash zero three three six Water Accountability and Equity Act and providing for special effective date. Sponsor: President on behalf of the administration.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Tax, Fiction, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four eight Landmark List Reed Callaway House. For the purpose of redesigning, excuse me, re, excuse me, for the purpose of designating the Reed Callaway House thirteen sixteen North Carey Street as an historic landmark exterior. Sponsors: Pinkett, Burnett, Clark.
Please add the council president as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past, I guess, couple of years now, there's been much debate as it relates to the residence of Cab Calloway in Baltimore, especially as it relates to the twenty-two-hundred block of Jewett Hill Avenue. This particular property, thirteen sixteen North Carey Street, is a special property in the life of Cab Calloway. Not only was it his residence for a time, it was also the home of his maternal grandmother, Annie Reed, who was given credit for developing the musical talent in Cab Calloway. Even in his writings, he described this particular time in his life fondly as a place that he enjoyed living and the growth that he had growing up in her household. This property is about a block off of Pennsylvania Avenue, so it really lines up with support, and it's on a revitalization block, so it really lines up with supporting the restoration that's already happening on Pennsylvania Avenue, as well as supporting the Black Arts and Entertainment District that is recently developed there. I'm so excited about this particular property. Cab lived in about six or seven different locations when he was in Baltimore, and this is one of the key locations in his life, and so we want to make certain that this property receives its proper landmark designation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman White President Middleton, Councilman Stokes as co-sponsor, or Councilman Cohen as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four nine City Property Renaming the Columbus Obelisk Monument to the Police Violence Victims Monument. For the purpose of changing the name of the Columbus Obelisk Monument located at Heinz Park to the Police Violence Victims Monument. Sponsor: Dorsey.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I hope that folks will take the time to read the recitals that were written in as the text of this bill. You know, I put a lot of thought into that, but I don't want to take the time right now to read all of that, but I think it's worthwhile. I just want to say that, you know, if you're not familiar with this monument, this is a plain white obelisk standing in the center of a small park at a fairly busy intersection called Heinz Park, and it's forty-four feet tall, and it's the oldest monument to Columbus that we know of in the United States. This is not its original location. It was relocated here in nineteen sixty-four. Most of you or all of you will recall that a couple of years ago, there was a video made of somebody hitting this monument with a sledgehammer, cracking the placard inset in it into pieces. That has since been removed, and the damaged area restored, but no placard in that place any longer. In the period shortly after that, there was a lot of community discussion about the potential to rededicate this, and I did a survey, and I talked to a lot of people, and there was no real emerging consensus about it. And I wasn't being lobbied to do anything in any forceful way by anybody, so it kind of sat on the back burner for a while. And I'm putting this forth today because as we close the end of this term, I've spent the better part of four years being told by many, why don't you do something about? And often, these questions, these statements, this prodding, is followed by things that the city council has no statutory power over, specifically when it comes to the police department. We cannot reform the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights here at the city level, but it should be reformed, and if we had it here at the city level to change, I would participate or lead any efforts in order to do that. We cannot pass laws on our police department in general here at the local level. There is little that we could do. For instance, if we wanted to, we could not pass laws prohibiting certain types of chokeholds, prohibiting the use of rubber bullets, which are just bullets that are covered with rubber. We could not, at the local level here, pass a law banning no-knock warrants. There is little to nothing that we have statutory power to be able to do to affect police violence. And so, to simply name a monument to honor the victims and the families and the communities traumatized by police violence, an epidemic, as I see it, is really the least, and in many ways, the most of what we can do. And so, the better when it is to repurpose a monument that has stood for more than two hundred years to the lie of Columbus as a hero, the mythologizing, the rewriting a fictional history of somebody as somebody we should lift up. And so, I thank anybody and everybody for your support on this, and I'm very proud and thankful to be able to put this forth today. Thank you.
Please add the council president as a co-sponsor, Councilman Henry, Councilman Pinkett as co-sponsors. Thank you. This has been the sign, oh, Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sneed. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two three two R Request for State Action, Governor Hogan and Addictions. For the purpose of calling on Governor Hogan to allocate at least one hundred seventy-five million dollars for rental assistance and eviction prevention in Maryland from coronavirus relief funds or another source, to expand the eviction moratorium to cover all types of eviction cases, and to extend the moratorium until the public health emergency has ended and sufficient financial assistance is available for residents to avoid eviction, and to take all other necessary steps to prevent homelessness and evictions during the public health emergency. Sponsors: Henry, Bullock, Clark, Sneed, Burnett, Middleton.
Please add the council president as a co-sponsor, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all my co-sponsors. As the resolution itself points out, rent delinquency rates for this May are literally twice what they were a year ago. I don't know that I need to go into details in hammering home just what a crushing blow to the economy the pandemic has been, but I do think the point is worth making that the essential workers, who are disproportionately black and brown families, have been the hardest hit. In Baltimore City alone, over fifty thousand residents are at risk of eviction when those evictions resume in late July, as is currently expected. Mayor Young, on behalf of the city, has announced the creation of a thirteen million dollar city rental assistance program. That's going to be very useful, very needed, but the best calculations say that there's probably closer to three times that need here in the city, and the state of Maryland has one point three billion dollars in funds from the federal government, some of which could be made available for this purpose, as other states have done. And so, this is Baltimore City hopefully joining with other subdivisions around the state, calling upon Governor Hogan to immediately start moving some of that money into a program to help people keep their homes, and I would like to motion to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Henry, and I will also note that we also have to continue to try to push for federal action on this same very issue as we had before here in the council, because we know this is an issue that really should be coming from the highest of the high in American government. Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman McRae.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton. We'll come back to the vice president. Her signal is a little bit down. Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Oh.
Madam Vice President, you're back?
Yes, I'm back.
And your vote? Thank you. That is a yea. Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Oh.
Madam Vice President, you're back?
Yes, I'm back.
And your vote? Thank you. That is a yea. Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, the res, this resolution has been adopted. A committee reports, we will now move to Bill on second reader, and before I do that, I want to recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will read short titles for remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be ready for the remainder of the meeting. Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill Nineteen dash zero three seven nine, Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This charter amendment has come out of committee favorable with several amendments. I also have an amendment on the floor that needs to be offered. Taking the committee amendments first, the committee amendments were done after much consultation and discussion with the administration, specifically the Departments of Law and Finance. They address a number of logistical concerns that the Finance Department and the Law Department had with basically how this charter amendment will work. And to give a quick summary of this charter amendment to anyone who has not been following the game at home, this charter amendment would allow the council to not only cut money from the budget, but also move that money to other budget lines inside the context of a given, a given ordinance of estimates. The amendments that are before you that the committee has already approved put some specific restraints on how that money can be moved. The council literally doesn't do things that really couldn't be done, like cut money from one fund and add it to another fund that it can't actually be used for. But what it would do is it would allow the council to do what it isn't allowed to do this year and has not been allowed to do in any previous year, which is when we know that there are things the city should be spending money on, and the people agree that there are things that the city isn't choosing to spend money on that need the city's work and commitment, it would give the council the legal ability to make a cut somewhere, painful as it might be, and reallocate those funds to a specific use. In the case of this year, the council made a number of cuts to the police department and other entities, money that could now be used by the administration if it chose to restore the cuts made to the fire department and keep open to fire companies that are scheduled for closure in the coming weeks or months. It's been very clear from the reaction that people don't want those fire companies to go away, and the council agreed with them, and yet the mayor chooses or has chosen so far not to restore those cuts. If this charter amendment were in place, the council would have had the opportunity to just move that money ourselves. The mayor would have had the opportunity to veto those cuts and reallocations, just as the mayor has that power now, and the council would have the power to override those vetoes if the commitment in the council was strong enough, as for example, we've just done earlier tonight. This is truly an opportunity to restore something like a check and balance on the mayor's budgetary power in a way that most people think we can and are often disappointed to learn that we cannot. So I ask my colleagues to support this charter amendment. I understand that there are people who are still trying to make certain that they've got all of the different parts of this going together, so I'm not going to ask for it to be double-read tonight, but I am going to move the committee amendments on this bill as it comes out on second reader. So, Mr. President, I move the amendments.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
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 All those who say nay.
Aye.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's also a floor amendment that I'm offering on behalf of your office. We understand that this is going to involve a huge culture shift for all of the agencies, but especially the Budget Department as it literally changes the process for how the budgets should be constructed. And so the amendment I'm offering from the floor changes the effective date on this amendment so that if the, if, if we pass this, if it's signed by the mayor or vetoed but then overridden and proceeds to the voters of Baltimore City in November, and they ratify it, it would go into effect in July of twenty twenty-two and give the next administration one full budget cycle to have a new budget with hopefully a new, more inclusive budget process working with the council. Because as many of us have discussed over the years, if the council were involved earlier in the budget formulation process, we probably would have fewer complaints and conflicts at the very end, because as we've been doing this over the years, that's the only time the council comes into the budget process right now. So this amendment would basically put off implementation of this change until twenty twenty-two, and I move the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
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 I understand, I'm, I'm going to abstain out of respect for the president's office that recommended it and the chairman who's recommending it as well, but we're all right now explaining every day by email to an awful lot of advocates out there that we don't have this power. There's a charter amendment coming, the vote we hope is in November third, the general election, and that between we come full cycle to next year's budget deliberations, we will have the powers that people think we already have. So I'm, I'm not voting against this amendment out of respect for the two principles of the decision, but I sure can't vote for it because I sure have told people to vote for this amendment in November so that next year is different from any year that's ever been. Thank you.
Thank you. Please note Councilwoman Clark as an extension. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. This amendment is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move this charter amendment as amended favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 Who say nay?
Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'm going to vote yes on this. First, I'm going to vote yes on this. I like to say from the perspective of the person who's chaired the Budget Committee for the past four years that we have made a lot of progress in terms of getting things included in the budget that the council has thought to be important. Those efforts have resulted in pretty fruitful negotiations with the administration the previous three years. I think this year was a bit of an outlier. But I, I certainly welcome the opportunity for the council to play a more meaningful role in the, in the development of the budget in our city. That being said, I would caution everyone, and I want the record to reflect this, what the potential unintended consequences of this action are. This upcoming year, we have three hundred eighty million dollars in debt service. That's essentially in the range of two to four and a half percent, depending on where the funding is, what activity it's, it's funding, when bonds were put to market, what the conditions were at the time of that. If the bond rating agencies were to decide to downgrade our bond rating from a double A currently to a single A, that could have a disastrous effect on our city's budget. I'll note that just last week, we were able to sell bonds at two percent, which as I understand it is the lowest rate that we've been able to do that in decades, and that is partly due to, in fact, the fiscal prudence that mayor and previous mayors and the current council and previous councils have demonstrated literally over generations to get us to the point where we're able to borrow money so cheaply. And for those who aren't well-versed in bond ratings, I would offer up the following example. The debt service that we have is essentially a credit card. A family may have a credit card with a credit card balance of ten thousand dollars at fourteen point nine nine percent, which is an average rate, at two hundred and fifty dollars a month per payment. They end up paying thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. If that rate were to be increased to say nineteen point nine nine percent, instead of paying thirteen thousand nine hundred, they would end up paying sixteen thousand six hundred and nine dollars. I know the bond rating is something that we consistently talk about, and sometimes there's a feeling that that bond rating does not impact us or does not impact our budgetary situation, but it very much does. And when we look at the things that we are trying to fund in Baltimore City, and we know that there are more things that we want to fund than we have the dollars to fund, there are more things we want to fund than we have the available credit to take out in order to be able to fund, and I just want to caution everyone about this. And I hope that in the very near future, we can have some type of study that will shed some light on what the impact of, of this decision is that we're making today, which is going to have significant impacts, and I'm not suggesting negative, but is going to have significant impacts on the way that our government operates. So again, Mr. President, I vote yes, and thank you for the opportunity to explain my vote.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
No, and I would like to explain my vote. I do think that Councilman Costello hit on one of the notes when we're talking about debt service and our bond rating. As one of the, one of three of the members of this committee, in sitting through hours of this committee's testimony, making sure that our bond rating is intact and knowing that this may potentially impact this city, and we are going through a global pandemic right now, I cannot vote no. The other reason that I will not be voting no is that we have had barely any, barely any public testimony on any of these charter amendments. Many of these charter amendments, I feel, need to go through a charter review commission. Going forward, I will not be voting yes on any further charter amendments that come out of this committee. Again, we have had very little public input, and to sit here and talk about a digital divide for students and not talk about a digital divide for families who are not a part of this is very concerning to me. I vote no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Yes, I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman McCray. We talk about transparency here, and this is just serious, and we need, when we talk about charter amendments, we need to vet this out to the community because it's going to affect them. So I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman McCray. If we're not going to vet these charter amendments, I would be voting no on those charter amendments.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Snead.
I'm, I, I don't have an explanation other than to say that I'm going to vote, change my vote to no because what's at stake right now, and since I won't be here in the future to fully defend what's going to happen in this council, I, I do know that we have the best person who's up to be our mayor to make some good decisions, and I'm confident that he will do that, so I'm going to switch my vote to no.
Thank you. Please note Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Snead, as opposed, Councilman Clark as an extension.
Oh, that's on the amendment, right?
No, this is.
Oh, we're on the bill, right?
This is on the bill. Oh, yeah, as a, no, you're right. Sorry about that, Councilman Clark.
Oh, we did the amendment.
Yeah.
And now we're on the bill as amended, right? Because that's what I'd like to talk about, if I may, in explaining my vote on the bill as amended. Is that where we are?
Yes.
It lost.
Councilwoman Clark, go ahead.
Well, let me just tell you why I'm voting yes. This is a very safe, balanced legislation. Now, council, my council friend, the head of the committee, used to work in an office I shared with him. He gave me a rubber stamp, and it said charter lover. Yes, I am a charter lover. I believe in a lot of strength for accountability by a mayor of a city. But this bill has got four walls around it and a ceiling to also. This bill says you cut a million dollars from X agency, and you want that million to go to Y, let's say police to fire, for example. If you do that, that, this bill, if approved, would allow that. But we are not allowed to increase the bottom line of the budget. We are not allowed to mess with any funds except general funds, which come from the tax rate of the city. We can't take some federal grant and cut it. We can't cut it and pass that money. That's not our money, general fund. That's not covered. So basically, this is a balance of power. It is not, it is okay for a charter lover to vote for, and in fact, I think it's long overdue for us to have, we are all grown, elected people with responsibilities, and they're not going to let, the law wouldn't let us go below. You can't, you can't go below or above, you've got to hit the bottom line that the city hands us to begin with. We can't increase it, we can't, I guess we could cut it short, but we can't raise the expenses of the budget. It's not allowed in this law. So my gosh, everybody, let's, let's, let's exercise the kind of, of, the kind of legislative authority that our constituents already think we have and we should as their legislators. Thank you very much. I vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. The ayes are Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Snead. This bill moves to third reader, second reader, I'm sorry. This bill, oh, moves to third, yeah, moves to third reader. All right. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty dash zero two seven one, Daniel A. Greenberg, Member, Commission on Disabilities, District Five.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has a hearing on June the seventh, June the seventeenth, twenty twenty. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
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 Who say nay?
Mr. Council President?
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
I have no idea how much public testimony was given on this executive appointment hearing, so just in principle, because I'm not sure about how much public testimony was given, I'm just going to vote no.
Please note Councilman Dorsey as a co- Please note, Councilman Dorsey, as a no. The nomination is confirmed.
Mr. President, I'd like to join as well. I can confirm there was no public testimony. No, for me as well.
Please note, Councilman Burnett, as a no.
I'm joining my colleagues in voting no, as there was no public testimony in this nomination.
Councilman Poland, as a, as a no. And I'd like, just for the record, just to make sure you guys know that you are voting no against the Commission on Disabilities. Chair recognizes, this nomination is confirmed. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
The committee has a hearing on June the twentieth. I move the nomination favorable.
Mr. President, point of order.
Chair recognizes, oh, Councilman Stokes.
I think the clerk needs to read...
The clerk, pause one second, the clerk didn't read...
The name.
...nomination. Pause one second, we're having a little bit of technical difficulties here in City Hall, as you guys have all suffered through it before. Mr. Clerk?
EA twenty dash zero two seven two, Michael King, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Two.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Mr. President?
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. On the basis of my assumption that there was an insufficient amount of public testimony on this bill, and on this hearing, on this confirmation, I'm voting no on it.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey, as a no.
EA twenty dash zero two seven, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Twelve. And just a reminder for everyone to mute themselves, thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Mr. President?
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. On the basis of principle, believing that there was probably an insufficient amount of public testimony on this bill, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey, as a no.
Mr. President, I'd like to abstain for the lack of public testimony at the hearing.
Please note, Councilman Burnett, as an extension. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Seck.
I mean, I guess, I've sat on this executive committee, unfortunately, for the past four years. I don't really recall people ever coming in to testify, unless it's like the police commissioner or director. But I'm pretty sure public testimony, actually, I know it was available for anybody who didn't want to testify, nobody logged in.
Point of order.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
This committee. And basically, we get, we get a volume of background information on the candidates for office, as my colleague from the Fifth District has indicated. Now, I don't know what this is about, and the reason it's a point of order is, before we have another one of these meetings of executive appointments, I would like someone to explain what just happened, because I don't think it's a reflection on any of the people I sat for, when they, these three people came in, to accept a placement on the Board of Disabilities, to help people with disabilities in this city, and to do so at no compensation. So basically, my point of order is, fine, something's up about no outside witnesses. I think that we are basing a lot of our decisions on personal interviews and hearings, and on background information that is provided to us in volume before the hearings occur. So sometime between now and tomorrow, I would appreciate the President's office telling us what this is all about, because it's not fair to the candidates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. I think that you would have to talk to our colleagues about their votes, not control their votes.
Mr. President, if I may, I know that.
Yeah.
I would ask if the delegation would let me know.
Councilwoman Clark, all right. I'm speaking into one of our other colleagues that had hand raised, too. No, I understand. Councilman Seckler?
I'm going to refrain from saying what I want to say.
Okay. Councilwoman Clark? Thank you. This nomination is confirmed.
Land Use Committee. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one seven, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwellings in the R eight zoning district, variances fourteen, ten, West Chicago Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Rosiger.
Mr. President? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I want to move the finding of facts.
All those in favor of approving the findings of facts, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The findings and facts are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosiger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine four, zoning, conditional banquet hall, fifty-four oh one Bel Air Road.
Chair recognizes Councilman Rosiger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
All those in favor of approving the findings of facts, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The findings of facts are approved. Chair recognizes...
Mr. President, this bill has amendments. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving amendments, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosiger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, this bill...
Third reader for final passage. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three six, city streets closing, three ten-foot alleys. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three seven, city streets opening, North Durham Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three eight, city streets closing, North Durham Street, and a sixteen-foot alley. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five zero two, Woodbury Historic District. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five zero six, Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program, Critical Area Manual, Map, and Zoning. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five one one, sale of property, former bed of Cromwell Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five one four, bond issue, affordable housing loan, twelve million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five one five, bond issue, school loan, thirty-eight million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five one six, bond issue, community and economic development loan, thirty-eight million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five one seven, bond issue, public infrastructure loan, loan, seventy-two million dollars. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five three four, sale of property, five thousand one, Rice's Town Road, AKA, Lexington Hughes Elementary School. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Schleifer, as a no. This bill is approved. Committee announcements. We will now move to committee announcements. I will go starting with Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold a hearing on Wednesday, July eighth at five P M. This will be a virtual WebEx meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, we will move to education and youth. Councilman Cohen, do you have anything?
None at the moment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Equity Instruction, Councilman Henry.
Not at this time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Executive Appointments, Councilman Stokes. You're on mute, Councilman.
President, executive appointments committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, June twenty-four, twenty twenty, at ten A M. to review the following nomination, Mayor's Commission on Disabilities for Kimberly Gray. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Councilman, Health Committee, Councilman Burnett, do you have any for either of your two committees?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend Rule ten dash three to announce the hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee, Health Committee, will have a hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-eighth at ten oh five A M. on Resolution twenty dash zero two three one, informational hearing on bringing back Victory Gardens. And the Health Committee will be also having a hearing on Bill number twenty dash zero five one zero on Tuesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty, at ten A M. for Bill twenty dash zero five one zero, trauma-informed care, task force composition, revisions, and clarifications. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Labor Committee, Councilman Snead?
Yes, I have, Labor Committee will have a hearing on Thursday, July sixteenth, Bill twenty dash zero five four three, on Thursday, July sixteenth, at one P M. for the purpose of requiring certain successor businesses, employers taking control over certain businesses from the incumbent businesses, employees, employers to retain certain employees. And then the other one we have is twenty dash zero five four four, Thursday, July sixteenth, as well, at one oh five P M. for the purpose of requiring certain employers to recall certain employees who have been laid off after COVID-nineteen state of emergency. And that's it.
Thank you. Land Use Committee, Councilman Rosiger?
Mr. President, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-eighth at ten A M. on Resolution nineteen dash zero one five nine. This is an investigative hearing in regards to building backups of untreated sewage. The committee will also hold a hearing on the Land Use, yeah, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, July twenty-ninth, at one P M. on Bill nineteen dash zero four two seven. That should be zoning located at ten twenty, West Press Street. Mr. President, I just want to settle back to first committee hearing I missed. This is going to be televised on strong TV. That's it, ten A M., July twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be hearing Bill number nineteen dash zero four three one, towing licensing and regulations on Tuesday, July seventh, at four P M.
Thank you. Tax base and economic development, Madam Vice President?
No announcements at this time. Thank you.
Transportation Committee, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you to suspend the rules necessary to be able to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, July eighth, at three P M. on Council Bill twenty dash oh five four two, commercial vehicle parking introduced by Councilman Henry.
Thank you. And sorry, Councilman Bullock, I didn't mean to skip you, but Housing and Urban Affairs Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like, I move to suspend rules to announce a hearing for a buildup introduced to the last meeting.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be having a hearing at two ten P M. on Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, for a City Council Bill twenty zero five three eight, forming city streets closing to portions of East Cromwell Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Regular announcement, let me first start off by saying in regular announcement that we all need to wish Councilwoman Clark a happy birthday. Her birthday is today, so happy birthday, Councilwoman Clark, or as we like to say, Council President for Life, Councilwoman Clark. So thank you, and happy birthday, ma'am. Thank you so much, as always, for your dedicated service. I would also like to ask that Councilman Milton honor a moment of silence for the now one hundred and fifty-three victims of homicide that we've had in Baltimore thus far this year, all those we've lost to overdose and COVID-nineteen as well. And I would like to say that we know there's a lot being said about public safety in Baltimore and around the country, and I think that we have to understand that we are talking about reimagining public safety, and that's going to be a very intensive thing for all of us to go through, but we know that Baltimore still has a lot of issues with violence in our city. And this weekend, this past week, we saw in Councilman Burnett's district on Thursday into Friday, something that is unspeakable. When you have a toddler and a pregnant woman be shot, it shows how far we have to go, but it also shows how many types of issues that we must work, how we have to deal with things on the front end as well, dealing with things like intimate partner violence. And I just want to take this moment to say that anybody in Baltimore City, man or woman, who is actually experiencing that right now, especially as we are all forced really to spend a lot more time with each other, please speak up, of how we have to deal with the fact that we have to teach people how to deal with their issues in a different way, especially this matters to our young men across Baltimore City, and helping them understand that they do not own these young women, these young women are not their property, and we have to do a better job of raising them up to understand that, showing them how they can deal their conflict in a different way, and also being there to mentor them through issues. This also shows how much work we have to do around health and mental health in Baltimore City and trauma, because we now, in addition to having a focus on the flow of illegal guns and all the other things that we know that we have to do from a policing standpoint, because we now have families who are dealing with a unspeakable amount of trauma, who are going to be celebrating a new life coming into the world, and instead of now mourning of the loss of three lives that will never, will never be able to reach their full prime... that will never, will never be able to reach their full promise. So I would like to ask for a moment of silence and hope that we all understand the, the depth of this issue that we're all staring down. Anyone else has any other regular announcements? Councilwoman Clark, if you wanna go first.
Yes, thank you. Um, this is a regular announcement. I, I would just like to say that I've been around, as everyone knows, a long, long time. And in the years that I have, and have served on this council and lived as a citizen of Baltimore, I have seen one fire company after another pulled out. And here we are again. Now, when I had an emergency in my home, a medical emergency, I could promise you that, uh, that the engine company was the first to arrive and to help my relative come back, back to consciousness. Then came the medics, because that's how it works. Furthermore, these companies bring to the neighborhoods where they're located a sense of security, a refuge from the storm, and, and a sense that they're part of the city and the city's caring about them. I know it's, uh, almost four million dollars' worth of people, of, of savings, but there's no way to compare that to saving one life or saving one neighborhood sense of, a sense of being a neighborhood in this city that has all the kinds of services we most desperately need. And fire is one of them. I'm just saying that now because there are gonna be gatherings this week, there are going to be, we cannot just, and I know this council, I know this council and its leadership have tried very, very hard already that we didn't even have to have this in the budget, this big hole. But now, despite all the efforts, and thank you for that, Mr. President, and other members of the council, and, and of the, um, budget. Um, basically, we have it and we can't. We've lost enough companies through the years, and that should have ended a long time ago, because the need has only grown. And these are not just companies that put out, that go to fires. They're, they go home, to our homes and save our lives, and waiting for the medics who are so overworked to get there and, and help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and Councilwoman, I want you to be sure to check your, uh, your purse for your birthday gift in my office.
Oh, Mr. President, I already did, and I already have a young lady that serves at your clerk that's loving seeing it. And so, um, I may have to give it away to her, but I knew-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Miss Lucy, little Lucy, who endorsed you.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Rosiger. Councilman, hold on, you're on mute. Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. President. Happy birthday, Councilwoman Clark. I, Mr. President and my colleagues, I just wanna piggyback on what Councilwoman Clark was talking about, the engine companies. I have an engine fifty-five in my district, and they said they did analysis, you know, from the mayor's office. And I have three schools, I have a stadium, I have the casino, I have a hotel. Let's not count the residents, the small businesses, and also the industrial parks that's in my district. And they want to close the engine company. And it's not just for fires, but when it takes time for the ambulance to get there, you could always count on an engine, uh, engine truck or, uh, ladder truck to get there first. So I don't understand the wisdom or the reason for wanting to close two firehouses, made companies. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to piggyback off of that point and tie it into yours as well, we are, again, in this budget seeing a slight cut to Youth and Trauma Services in the Health Department, uh, having just passed. Uh, for any large city, the nation's most sweeping law related to reducing childhood trauma, um, to cut money from that line item sends a very, very, very wrong signal. Um, just like cutting fire stations as well. Uh, would, again, implore the mayor, uh, to fully fund legislation that he just signed.
Thank you. Uh, any other regular announcements? Councilman Dorsey?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Council President. Um, I actually wasn't gonna make anyone, but you seem to just be inclined to call on me, so thank you. Um, I, um, I just recently made a pledge to myself that I'm gonna save one tree from English ivy every week. Um, and so if there is anybody in my district who has a tree on their property that's being overtaken with English ivy, the only thing that I hate more in this world than the spy plane is English ivy. And so I will come to your house and I will free your trees of English ivy. If you'd like to, you can get in touch with me, you can email my office, you can call my office. Um, and anybody who, uh, wants to come out and learn about invasive vine removal, I would be glad to have you come along, and we can free up even more trees. Um, and, uh, and if any of my colleagues would like me to come over to their district and free up a tree and show you what it's all about, uh, I will be there. You just let me know, um. I really love getting rid of English ivy, and so I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other regular announcements? Chair recognizes, Council Vice President Milton.
Meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, July sixth, twenty twenty, at five P M. And may we have a moment of silence for the one hundred and fifty-three victims of homicide, our continued epidemic, opioid epidemic, and our continued COVID-nineteen epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the eighty-sixth meeting on the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.